All right, let's call this meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, Mr. Grandee.
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCollum.
Here.
Would entertain a motion on this morning's agenda.
Make motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCollum.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
Communications, Jake.
None to us.
Board.
Nope.
Public comments, portion of the agenda the public can speak on items not listed on the agenda. The board can't act on those items that could be topics for future meetings. Are there any public comments? Assembly. Nothing online and nothing in house.
Public comments, I think. I'll just real, real quick, uh.
You got the mic, Mike, Mike, Mike?
Just real quick, for those online or the people here, um, there was a threat in regards to Marion County, Kentucky. Or whatever, there were some statements made, different things, but it's going around now on social media or different things. It's not Marion County, Iowa, it's Marion County, Kentucky in regards to um, an issue that they were having. So that's what I stepped out for, but for anybody online or for you guys or whatever, if you hear calls or different things, not Marion County, Iowa.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Any other public comments on items not listed? All right, we will move on consent agenda, is there a motion?
Make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCollum.
Hi.
Very good, on to business. We have resolution twenty-four, or twenty twenty-four dash eighty, which is the third reading of the essential services. Uh, declaration, there it is on the board. And then should this get approved, then it's the establishment of a commission, Jared, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, very good. So you see the resolution posted? We won't read it for the sake of revenue. The same that one we've been working on. So is there a motion?
Yeah, make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four eighty.
Second.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCollum.
Hi.
Ramey.
No. So Jared, process. Do we have to establish that commission now or is that in the next board meeting?
Uh, I don't think that's something that we have to do right now. I think we can discuss um, how that comes about. Um, but it, it, it wouldn't be this meeting. I mean, if we need to put something on the agenda for next meeting after talking to council, we can certainly do that.
Okay, very good. Board, do you have any instructions for council?
I would, I would like to have, I mean, we have the option of either creating the council by motion or a resolution, or asking the local emergency medical services agencies to put one together. I would ask that the local uh, emergency medical services put an advisory councils together because they know more than I do about who should be on that. All I would ask that there be equal representation of all EMS service providers in the county. It's going to be a tough sell.
Is there agreement, Keisha, on that process?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so Jared, we probably need to make that a motion then, that that's the process you want to follow.
That's, that's the process I would like to follow, yes.
Okay, so you made a motion and I'll second?
That's a motion, I make that a motion.
Keisha.
I'll second.
Okay, Jake, we have a motion and support.
So McCollum.
Hi.
Ramey.
Abstain.
And Johnner.
Hi.
Okay, so then Jared, you'll take that motion and communicate with EMS to get the next process on the agenda for next meeting.
Do that, yes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Jared, appreciate that.
Thank you, we'll move on. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-nine, which is an amendment to the comprehensive future land use plan, Missy.
Yeah, anytime we have um, a change in zoning that doesn't fit within the current land use plan, it's always a recommendation that we review that um, land use map and do an update prior to hearing the zoning change. In this situation, we're gonna go from light industrial to general industrial of that area that's currently light blue in order for you to hear um, the following petition on eighteen seventy-seven highway fourteen. When we, when, you know, the update of the land use plan does not change the zoning in any way, it only changes the ability to look at a zoning change on, in this case, a portion of that area designated.
Okay. Board, questions for Missy on that, Jane, Missy, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, are there questions, discussion?
Um, Missy, in regarding, I was just reviewing, um, he's to, he's wanting to obtain his salvage license, is that correct?
Yes, so, um, yeah, Josh started his business in um, two thousand eighteen and he has over the years, of course, we don't start out the zoning at the, you know, the highest capacity. We start out at a um, you know, what allows for him to do what he wants to do and not um, open up any further, we never start at industrial zoning when they're, all they're wanting to do is work on um, diesel equipment. But he has gotten to the point where he wants to obtain his um, salvage license. He, he has no intentions and we'll get into that during the discussion of the rezoning and making a junkyard. But if you wanna purchase six or more rebuilder vehicles in a year, you're required to have a salvage license by the Iowa DOT and our ordinance requires you to have industrial zoning to get, for me to um, send that zoning certificate in. So that's why we're here in reviewing this.
So you'll talk about screening?
Correct, yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Steve, any questions?
Nope, I have none.
Okay, is there a motion on the resolution?
I make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four seventy-nine.
Second.
McCollum.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
Okay, we'll declare the public hearing open. This is a proposed Marion County zoning map amendment, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash four, Missy.
So, yep, this is for, again, this is for um, eighteen seventy-seven highway fourteen, Josh Peterson, Pete Farms. Um, started in two thousand eighteen with commercial ag, he was just gonna work on diesel equipment um, and then in twenty twenty-one, he has upgraded to C two highway commercial. He was expanding into vehicle sales and at this point, we now are um, again, he's wanting to obtain his salvage license, this just gives him the ability to purchase rebuilder vehicles um, through the state of Iowa and be able to rebuild them. Emily, could you go to the um, site plan, is it site plan on there?
It's not on there, is it Jake?
No, no.
Um, behind the um,
It's in our packet.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, behind the, what is currently the commercial storage building is where that he's proposing to extend the fence and build the, the containment for any rebuilder vehicles that have non, non-operating vehicles. Um, according to the ordinance and, and Josh is aware of this, that before I would issue the license to the DOT for him to get his salvage license, he has to have that screening up and I have to verify that it's up. And then from that point on, all vehicles that are rebuilders, that they're using parts, you know, taking parts off of, have to be contained within that area. So some of the stuff that he currently has outside would not allowed when, after the rezoning to be stored outside. Josh has done a really good job through the years of keeping, I mean, he's spent a significant amount of money um, on those buildings, always keeps it very nice. And he is in agreement that he doesn't want he um, to, to put up the screening and, and have it. Um, but yeah, again, in no way does he want any, a salvage yard as we, you know, you guys have approved a couple and that's not what he's looking to do. Um, he's aware of the containment, whatever, however many he wants to have is, he's gotta have within containment, six feet tall. Um, Board of Adjustments did approve the special use permit with the screening and they approved the screening to be steel that would match the building. So he's gonna use the dark gray steel to match the builder, the two buildings that are there. Um, through that process, he also did obtain a variance on the north property line setbacks. He built them under the commercial zoning setbacks, which when he's going to industrial, um, one of them was fifteen feet shy and one was twenty-five feet shy. So he didn't obtain a variance um, back in August to, to be able to move forward with the rezoning.
All right.
Through the um, Board of Adjustment, zoning commission and then public notice um, to property owners for this meeting, we did not receive any.
No objections.
No objections from any neighbors.
All right. Board, questions or discussion? Steve?
No, that wasn't my question, if you'd had received any public comments.
So, any public comment? All right, we'll uh, declare the public hearing closed, is there a motion?
Make motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCollum.
Hi.
All right, we have ordinance twenty twenty-four dash four, which is to approve the first reading of what Missy just described. Miss, anything else you want to add?
Um, a lot of times a rezoning would include a formal site plan. We did not include, um, we did not require him to do another site plan as he's not adding any more buildings. We did have no objections from the county engineer, we had no objections from environmental health, again. So site plan was not required for this zoning upgrade because they're not adding any buildings.
Okay, very good. Board, any discussion?
Nope.
All right, is there a motion?
Make motion, um, approve ordinance twenty twenty-four, approve the first reading.
Second.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCollum.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi. All right, very good, we have ordinance twenty twenty-four dash four, which is a motion for a, an agenda item to waive second and third readings and authorize final approval and publication. Is there a motion?
I move we approve ordinance twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four dash four and waive the second and third reading.
To final approval.
What it says on there, is there a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm.
Final approval.
McCollum.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi. Thank you.
Thanks, Missy. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-one, which is FY twenty-five, authorize and transfer of money for the rural basic.
So, um, that's a, this is a combination between the engineer's office, treasurer's office and auditor's office, I'll take it if that's okay. This is a standard um, procedure that you guys have seen for mid, all the years we've been here anyway. Um, you went through the budget process, um, we did the calculations on what's allowed to transfer um, um, from the rural basic fund uh, from our tax collections to the secondary road fund. This is the main county funding, county portion funding of the secondary road department. Um, the only thing of note this year, I guess, not that it's anything different, but um, with the new legislation and the allowable growth at only being three percent, the rural fund in Marion County was not at a three percent growth. So it is at the full three dollars and ninety-five cents on the tax levies that everybody's paying. Um, and so Tyler is um, getting the max that he's allowed out of that three ninety-five. It's not, it doesn't get the full three ninety-five, but it's the max allowed, so. Um, the general fund was reduced, but the rural services fund was not.
But from a budgetary standpoint, this is the expected.
This is the expected number, um, and we do it monthly based off tax collections. Um, Michaela in the treasurer's office does a fantastic job of um, getting taxes collected and, and then the, the tax sale. So it's generally a hundred percent uh, transfer. Um, but we do do it monthly based off collections, we don't just dump this whole amount ahead.
Right.
We um, for the sake of the fund balance.
Right, very good. Tyler, anything you want to add? Okay, board, any questions or discussion?
Nope, I don't have any.
Have none.
All right, is there a motion?
Make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four eighty-one.
Second.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCollum.
Hi.
Hey, now we have a uh, class C alcohol license for the gathering grounds, it's a renewal.
I don't know that anybody's online for this, this is, comes electronically from alcoholic beverages. This is the um, wedding venue down on the bussy stuff down there. Um, nobody's reported any issues, they've been operation for a long time, I think they have a lot of events down there.
Got all these, Jason? All right, word, any discussion?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, is there a motion?
Make motion to approve classy alcohol license for the um, gathering grounds.
Second.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCollum.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi. All right, we have compensation board changes, Keisha, I think you added this one.
Yeah, put this before um, so the board can discuss a little bit. Uh, this past um, legislation um, effective July first, there was Senate file twenty-four forty-two. As it stands today, um, with that um, legislation passed, there is no compensation board in place. Uh, I felt it was important that the board discuss how we want to handle this moving forward. Um, there is some changes in your packet. Um, ISAC has given us some changes, I believe you can see that online. When they made these changes, I think it's important that the board understands that we must take in consideration, if we were to take this on ourselves, um, air, then it, we would have to have in consideration um, for the electeds, what other counties, other states, private enterprise and federal government, the elected positions, that would be put on us. Um, there's also the change of um, if we were to do a compensation board and reinstate it, then the, what the compensation board um, would send to us like we have in the past, a recommendation, then we can separate that. We could say we wanted one electant to be at this, um, there, it's not the up and down and equal parts. Uh, or you can't, previously, it was in the compensation schedule, it wasn't, you could not, you could not go below. Um, but you had to, or you could not go above, you could, um, you had to equally move them, um, if we wanted to uh, have them percentages had to be equal to, to go below, sorry, that was a lot of words.
No, it's, it's a, it's a complicated change. So Keisha, thank you for trying to explain all of that. Jared, in a real quick summary, what are, based on the legal changes, what are the board's options regarding compensation boards?
Sure, uh, our compensation board was dissolved by operational law July one, so as it stands right now, we don't have a compensation board. Uh, the board could do nothing. Uh, there's no requirement that a compensation board um, be voted on or be created. Um, there, there are no deadlines there. Um, if the board does uh, want to create a compensation board, it's just simple majority vote and we would have one, the, the board could also later dissolve the compensation board by a majority vote as well. Um, but there really aren't any timelines in the code section. Um, in a nutshell, uh, if you create a compensation board, it, it operates largely like it did before. They have, there is a requirement that they uh, would have to show their work. Uh, same with the board of supervisors, if a compensation board is not created. But as uh, Ms. Johnner was just talking about, uh, the requirement that the salaries move in unison has been eliminated. Um, so the board, either the compensation board or the board of supervisors would be able to set um, the salaries individually.
So I think that's the important thing to highlight. It does not matter what form this takes, whether the board of supervisors takes this on independently or whether they establish a board. Now each elected salary can be set individually. Yeah, so Jared, did I state that correctly?
Uh, yes, that's, that's correct, yes.
So in terms of this um, structure we've had in the past, where the only salary that can be line itemed out is the supervisor's salary, now the board has authority over each elected official salary and establish that salary independently. So that's a massive change to the way we've done this in the past. And it doesn't matter whether it's a board that's doing it or whether it's the supervisors that are doing it. Um, that takes on a whole different character than what we've had previously. So, Keisha, did you have anything you wanted to recommend? Uh, were you thinking of just having this as a item to present and think about, what would the board like to do, what were your thoughts?
My thoughts were, um, I just wanted to, A, discuss and see kind of where we're at and then if we wanted to have it on for the next meeting, um, you know, to try to decide whether we were wanting to take this on ourselves or put uh, a compensation board back in place. I, I will say, um, from my standpoint, I have studied this a lot. Um, it, it's gonna be a lot of work for our standpoint, um, because of now the changes and, and taking it in consideration with other states, you know, enterprises, federal government, all that. Um, going out and finding that information is not going to be easy and um, and then obviously it's just uh, putting in that and how, how we, we proceed with that. Um, whereas if we had a comp, if we had a compensation board, I felt like maybe those electeds could possibly help um, with that process a little bit and, and helping them, direct them and where they would be able to get that research. Um, cause I, I don't know where you go and get, you know, what's a comparable for a recorder or an auditor or treasurer or, you know, so. Um, we can find, you know, the comparables a little bit, you know, when we talk about sheriff and we've done that in the past and attorneys, but. Yeah, I'm kind of leaning more towards back having the compensation board, just at least this first year, to be able to see how this process works.
Steve, you have any thoughts?
I, I never had an issue with the compensation board, per se, the board. I had an issue with the way it was structured. That we had no, no control over the other elected officials' salaries unless we, you know, if we changed one and everybody changed the same, I didn't like that. I have no issues with having the compensation board.
Okay. So, would you like to propose that the other electeds put their heads together and recommend individuals to form a compensation board?
I'm leaning that way, yes.
Jake?
Kind of, I hadn't thought of this and I'm throwing this cold at Jared because it just tawns on me while I'm sitting here. So originally, the electeds had to find their own representative.
Correct.
What, in this case, the board's creating, is it the same? Where does the board have to find?
No.
You get to choose, it's a clean slate, you don't have to go with who you had before.
But we have to find our own?
Yes, you have to find your own, yes.
That's the way I read it, Jake.
Okay, I didn't.
It's fairly, it's fairly wide open. The board can establish and find members of a compensation board or the board can ask for electeds, find some people, recommend those to the board and establish the board. It's fairly.
I hadn't, I hadn't thought of that.
There's been no case of first impression yet because it's new. And until that gets defined, it's gonna be fairly uh, open field running.
Just something for you to all consider also, just like Keisha said there, that uh, obviously this is gonna be a lot of work for volunteers, that, I mean, people that we select to do that, I mean, they've done the best they can as comp board representatives in the past of trying to do things and be fair on that, but it's also, I guess, I don't know how many volunteers are gonna step up and say, yeah, I wanna do all this research, you know, in regards to the comparables and how do we do that and every, all the new requirements of that law. So just something to consider on when we're talking about establishing a comp board is who, who is going to put all that together and if it's those volunteers, just so they're aware that, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of work that goes into that, I'm assuming.
So, so let me make a rec, let me make a recommendation, Jason, I think this is a good discussion.
Yeah.
But I think, give it some thought, especially the two of you, on what you want to do and how you would want to form that board. It is gonna be a lot of work for a volunteer to come in and now say, I can establish the, a recommendation for the sheriff's salary, of course, that he's gonna, that person's gonna talk to Jason as to what Jason would like to see, but now you have to actually come up with the work and show the math. That's what's gonna make it hard. Because then how do you justify that to a board, especially someone who's a volunteer? So I think you really need to think about that component of it.
And it is hard because I also, you know, I, when thinking about that, I also reached out to ISAC, asking them if there were firms that would be able to help us, like, could we hire somebody to help us go out and find this research? Um, and there isn't currently anybody and so uh, putting, it's either, you know, yes, and you're right, Mark, and regarding, it's a lot of work on those volunteers. Um, we also will have to do the same thing and I just, not having a county manager um, or anything like that, I mean, to go out and find this is gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of work.
It's basically the same as what we're doing now, it, isn't it? I mean.
Well, what you both described is very similar, the difference, the, the material difference, Steve, is this. Usually, what they, what the comp boards have done in the past is they've kind of fed off of each other. So when they've sat in a room together and talked about their formulation of salary, you're looking at the other salaries as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'm looking at what the sheriff's going to get, I'm looking at what the attorney's gonna get and then I'm going through my cost of living increases and my other comparables. You all, you kind of segment that now, where now it's just looking at the sheriff's salary in comparison with other sheriffs and other law enforcement and Jared's salary, independent of other attorneys and you can certainly have the board come together and say, look, it's gotta be within a range. I mean, I, I imagine the board of supervisors could have set, could set a salary range and say, this is what we're comfortable with on a percentage basis for increases, but provide guidance that would narrow that band a little bit on what the board has to do. I would just give it some thought and say, what structure are you looking for? Um, and, and what rules would you like the board to follow? Because ultimately, you're going to have to approve those. And it really doesn't, it's gonna come back to you whether you do it or whether they do it.
Yeah. Just one last thing, I, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds on this, but while we're thinking about creating this, be thinking about, you know, we've had these terms offset each other, usually they're four-year terms. And so there's been, at least in the training that I've been to, some discussion about considering whether we, you know, create a two-year term for some and a four-year term for others, just so they're not, there is a turnover all at once on the board. So not a, a huge issue, but just something to think about.
Just an operational issue though, for the board, absolutely.
Yeah.
So that would be, I'd say, give it some thought and then, Keisha, when you want to bring this back to formalize it.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's do that.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, I would talk to your other electeds too and see what they're.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is something I have discussed with a few of them, um, because it's weight heavy on me. I, we all know that salary is a very touchy thing and um, everybody is important, it's just there's only so much money. Um, having a compensation board would at least give us a recommendation and give us a starting point. Um, yeah, so.
Okay, good, no, good discussion. Thank you, is there a motion to close discussion?
Yeah, make motion to close discussion.
Second.
McCollum.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
So, updates, Steve?
Uh, I have a landfill meeting tomorrow.
Okay, Keisha.
Um, aging resources this week, impact next week. Also wanted to update the board supervisors on the Pell library. Um, I had reached out to one of the members, um, the trustees, asking them if the letter had been sent out because I am also a rural patron of the Pell library and I had not received anything. Um, they have not, um, they couldn't all come together, my understanding and agreement on what they wanted to have said in the letter. The meeting is today at four PM, I plan to try to attend and see what they do, um, plan to put in that letter.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you, excellent. Uh, we've approved as the VA subcommittee approving property purchases, some additional purchases with the city of Knoxville. So that is moving forward, uh, there's some additional interest there uh, from some home buyers and from the two developers. Uh, I think Glenn will come to the next meeting and give a full update on that. And then that's about it for me, so. There's anything else, anything else really good to be ordered, is there a motion to adjourn?
We have a little decision.
Oh, we do?
Yep.
Well.
Sorry, yeah.
Is there a motion to do that?
Yeah.
Make motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCollum.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Board, I just wanted to advise that I will move everybody into a waiting room that is online right now. Um, and then once we reconvene from closed session, I will move you back into the Zoom. So you can leave if you don't intend on being here once we reconvene, otherwise I will put you into a waiting room.
Very good, thank you. We back, yeah?
Reconvene to open session September tenth?
All right, is there a motion to reconvene into open session?
Make motion to reconvene, open session.
Second.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi. Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Very good, thank you, the board took no action during the closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion, adjourn.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
We are adjourned, thank you.